My Sharona. There we go. Natalie got him. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, all three members are present. It's nine o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. Notice that the meeting was properly posted April twenty second, twenty twenty five, which happens to be land run day. Um, dun dun dun, first of all, our prayer and pledge, District One. It's all you.
Our minister today has not arrived, but uh, if you will, would you please um, stand? Lord, we thank you for this day that you have made. Lord, with this ask that you will continue to bless the best county there is, Oklahoma County. Bless each county commissioner and bless each staff member who represents Oklahoma County. These things we pray your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one will be the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve? There's a motion. Is there a second? All second. Uh, there's a motion in a second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Item number two is the claims.
Play the claims.
There's a motion to approve claims and a second. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Item number three is the P card. Standard. Is there a motion to approve the P card scene? There's a motion and a second. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any changes to the blanket? Looks like there's changes.
Good morning. We have one addition. That is requisition one, two, five, zero, six, four, four, nine. For general government, this is for the county pharmacy medication and supplies to Ameris- AmerisourceBergen in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, is there a motion with that change?
So will.
There's a motion with that change to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number three. Or number five, sorry. This is a bid.
This is a recommend- recommendation to award for lawn maintenance supplies, CW two, five, zero, three, one dash two. Uh, we received one bid on this cycle and we're recommending award to that bidder, not a center of farms.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval. All in favor.
Aye.
Items six through eighteen are our consent. Is there any individual consideration?
Public consent pocket.
There's a motion to approve consent and a second. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Why is this stuff? There it goes. All right, District number one. This is um. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah. Morning, Commissioners. Um, you all recently appointed District One to uh, attend the coweb meetings, workforce development. We received a uh, request to uh, put this contract back across the board. When I spoke with them, it was due to the number of new uh, designated from the various counties. So um, this will take us through the FY twenty five mark and it will renew uh, if there are no changes.
Perfect.
Second.
There's a motion in a second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. District number two, this is all you, Commissioner Ramon?
Yeah, it's my honor that we have several distinguished guests, including Judge Natalie Mai with us today and um, there's a big celebration that will be coming up that commemorates the fiftieth anniversary of the fall of Saigon on April thirtieth, which will be held in Washington DC, but in Oklahoma, we will have a celebration on uh, Sunday, the twenty seventh at three thirty till six at Military Park on Northwest Twenty Fourth and Classen, where one of our ARPA projects will be unveiled as the construction of the uh, boat art. It's a beautiful structure that symbolizes those who escaped the communist and got freedom here in America. This is a long resolution and so I won't read all of that, but we have it here for you to uh, present and have read as part of your program if you like on Sunday. But uh, Toon is here. Would you care to speak? I think you're kind of heading this up and then introduce who you have with you.
I'll motion to approve this resolution.
There's a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please, Mr. Toon.
Yes, uh, thank you so much Commissioners for having us today. Uh, we just wanted to introduce you to our um, committee, uh, Vietnamese American community, uh, Heritage Community of Oklahoma. We have also Deacon San Tran, uh, San Nguyen. He's been with us for like over fifty years and serving in Vietnamese community, which is really special. Uh, Mr. Quang Pham, Judge Natalie Mai, and a couple of our board members, but um, this uh, the significant uh, fifty year anniversary will celebrate not only the, the historical marker of our community, but actually is gonna set this apart. I think this uh, arts installation will draw more um, more than millions of people. Um, statistics wise, uh, the Asian district has thirteen million people visiting it every year. Four point three seven million of those people are new newcomers to the district. So it's estimated that with the Olympics, with the Route sixty six and with the arts installation, it's uh, estimated that uh, that statistics is gonna be going up in the near future. So I'm hoping that um, in the near future, the Asian district will actually make its marker um, on Route sixty six and also uh, for the state of Oklahoma. Thank you so much Commissioners.
To me, I think one of the most important things it symbolizes is the freedom and I wanted to ask you to also point out there's gonna be a tribute to the Vietnam veterans.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So we are commemorating the fifty year. Uh, we will be um, we will be commemorating um, our Vietnam War veterans, our American soldiers, as well as our Vietnamese soldiers that were, have fought. Um, is at, at the Brothers in Arms statue. Um, we'll begin the ceremony probably at four o'clock. On Sunday.
Yeah, they didn't all get that welcome back at the day, so I think for those who are able to, it's really important that we can honor them. So I've been trying to notify everybody that I can. There are sadly, a lot of them not either physically able or even more tragically have already passed away, but for those who can, uh, found one last night who flew three hundred and four missions, who intends to come and I think he was just moved tiers by the invitation.
Thank you so much Commissioners.
Would you like a photo?
Yes, sir.
Sure.
We appreciate all the work that each of you have done. I know that's been a project a long time in the making and it's gonna be perfect timing with the Olympics.
Great job.
Thank you, sirs.
Absolutely. District number three, this is um, in front of you. If we can uh, have a motion to actually receive this document into the record.
So will.
There's a motion and a second for receiving. A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. What this document does is it actually allows all of our utility bills just to go to the new uh, county manager, Jessica Clayton. Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Push your button, John. There we go. All right, this one is to authorize chairman to sign real estate documents for the closing of eleven hundred Southeastern. That's the uh, piece property directly across the street from Crooked. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Okay. That's interesting. No second. Seeing. No action will happen. Item number twenty-three, change order number one. Stacy?
This is the eleventh floor of the courthouse and stairwell project uh, for fire. In case of a fire, you can get the inmates off that floor. Um, the first item here has to do with uh, security issues brought up by the sheriff's department. Uh, wanted them to go do this work at night instead of during the day. I've got some correspondence from Captain Kimbrough here. Um, they had several meetings on this issue, so. To move to night work, uh, which was not part of their bid, uh, thirty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars, finish the project.
Okay. I've heard the explanation. Is there a motion to approve?
So will.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number twenty-four.
Number twenty-four is an amendment to this contract. Uh, there was some errors in measuring uh, the stairwell. Uh, when it went out to bid, uh, this had been discussed with Commissioners. We had to go to more, a different design, a switchback design. So this one is for nineteen thousand five hundred and seven dollars. Moving on.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number twenty-five is a JAG grant for the sheriff.
Yeah, this is the uh, no changes other than just the slide amounts of the, of the amount or numbers on the amount in the year. Um, same intended use for to support our radio contract of Oklahoma City.
Moving on them.
There's a motion and a second for approval. All in favor?
Thank you.
Aye. Commissioners comments. Mr. Pettis?
We just want to say thank you for everyone who attended the swearing in of Commissioner Lo. Thank you.
Commissioner Ramon?
Uh, just a reminder that the arts festival starts tomorrow and there is a ceremony for us, I think in eleven and um, when people have in the past said, when I didn't receive my invitation. The invitation is when they come here and read it into the microphone, so no one is snubbed. That's the uh, official notification of when they receive us from Oklahoma County leadership on the stage. So for you and Commissioner Lo to know, that's how it works. And then also, uh, obviously the marathon this weekend and our parking garage is good to go on that and be a public service to those who need a place to park while they're expecting literally tens of thousands downtown.
All right. Definitely remind everybody to go to the uh, arts festival. That's a good revenue generator for the city and the county, so. Any new business? Seeing none? Is there a motion to recess into executive session?
So will.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item thirty. This would be a motion to abandon subject to any unpaid back taxes.
For both thirty and thirty one, correct?
Yes sir.
That'll be my motion.
Alright, there's a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Alright.
Since the participation, I don't have any slips. Sharon doesn't have any. Is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion, see no objection, that'll be the order. We stand adjourned, hop into PBA. Alright, we'll call this meeting to order, all three members are present, that is the meeting was properly postponed to April twenty second, twenty twenty five. Item number one is the approval of minutes, is there a motion to approve?
So.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number two is the claims, is there a motion to approve claims? There's a motion, is there a second?
Waiting for my button.
Yeah, push your button, John.
Oh, you're not in. You gotta get out.
It's so great.
Uh?
So great.
Yes ma'am, item number two. And there was a motion by Commissioner Ma and a second by Mr. Pettis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you gentlemen. Very well, this is item number three.
Item number three is a little unusual, you don't see these pay applications to be discussed particularly. But for those people who are unaware or new. I'd like to outline exactly what's taking place here, this has to do with the total rebuild, gut and rebuild. Of the investors capital building next door for the district attorney's use. We funded this. Through seven million dollars worth of PBA bonds. Approximately three point four million dollars with ARPA. Investors capital funds of two million dollars. And then TIF reimbursement. Uh, a little over two million dollars from Oklahoma City. This pay application. In total, the first pay application is four hundred and eighty eight thousand one hundred and ninety seven dollars. Two hundred seventy eight thousand three hundred ninety one dollars. Belongs to the PBA funds and so. That portion that you see today relating to the PBA is what's to be paid utilizing bond funds.
Any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Quick question, Mr. Chairman, um. What is the completion date?
The completion date for the interior portion. Using ARPA dollars and correct me if I'm wrong, is at the end of twenty twenty six. The exterior, the mechanical, the rest of those um. Items necessary to complete could well go beyond that, but we're hoping twenty twenty six, correct me Stacy if I'm wrong.
Yeah, the current schedule is for the end of twenty twenty six for everything, as long as we can stay on schedule, but. We must stay on schedule on the ARPA. Alright, thank you.
But we think it's sweet of you to ask.
Yeah.
We've all just gotten used to just. It's.
Finished when it's finished. Item number three, is there a motion to approve? There's a motion, is there a second?
Not showing up, but I'll second.
There we go. There's a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Gentlemen, item number four, Commissioner Ma, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, this is to use the uh chairs. And tables that are belong to PBA for the annual open house cookout. At district two, if there are no questions, I'll move the item.
There's a motion and a second for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number five is probably a more appropriate place for this is the uh action to authorize the chairman to sign real estate documents for eleven hundred eastern. Is there a motion? Seeing no motion, any citizen participation?
Uh, not got a question about that. The close- the closing deadline by contract you signed is next week. Um, Friday is your drop dead date. Uh, the title company to ask for this, so they could prepare the title documents for signature, so. If one of you is not gonna sign, I'm gonna assume all three of you are gonna sign and I'll have them prepare the documents that way, then all three of you will have to tend closing. If there is one.
After hearing that, any changes? Seeing none, citizen participation, still nothing, board comments, anyone? New business, is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion to adjourn and a second, seeing no objection, that'll be the order. We stand adjourned.